But it's still like, this is wrong. It's one of those things where it's wrong.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Please stand for a moment, asylum, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Drew Harville, come on up and you're applying for a couple committees. Tell us why you want to serve.
Um, mostly, it's because I don't want to just complain anymore. I want to be an active participant. I want to be in the room where it happens and helping to enact change. The transportation committee I want because as a cyclist, as a person that cares deeply about the the infrastructure of the city and persons who are at risk, who say don't have a driver's license or don't have a means to get to work or not the money, you know, having that infrastructure available to them to ride a bike to work and do so safely. I've spent a lot of time in Sioux Falls and their their cycling path is magnificent. It's wonderful and you can get darn near everywhere and I don't see why we don't have something on par with that and something that is as beautiful as that. Also, the environmental board because, and I care deeply about the environment. I care about having a clean city. And I know that it was suggested that there was a possibility that I could be allowed to be on both boards. I think that, you know, if you build it, it will come. If you have that strong infrastructure, if you're getting people outside and invested in the cycling paths and trails, that then they are stakeholders in the environment. And then they also want a clean city. They see, you know, they're out in nature and they're invested in that. And I feel that if I were on both boards, then I would be in a position to like create a bridge and affect that from both sides.
I think those are all good reasons. And you saying that instead of just complaining, because that is what it takes. You know, I've had emails from citizens with a complaint or maybe a harsh suggestion. And I say, hey, we can't do this, but we can do this. Have you ever thought about getting on one of our committees? And people have actually done it. And then once you're in the trenches, it helps you to understand the process more. And sometimes even changes do happen from someone else's perspective. So I do really appreciate that you made that statement and said, well, I'm just gonna stop complaining. I'm gonna do something.
Right, exactly right.
And everybody wants us to do something, but there has to be change if there's gonna be change. So this would be a great step.
Yeah, I'd like to be that person. I'd like to be a part of a team that helps do that.
Great. Well, thank you for applying.
There, I don't even know. I haven't checked, but if, what would be your number one preference? Just so we know that.
Uh, the environmental board. I think they need persons more.
They need you more.
Yeah, they have four vacancies, I think, or three. So, yeah.
Thank you for making the applications.
Yeah.
And just so you know, in full transparency too, like I appreciate that the mayor asked that because I'm all for, if you're willing to serve on both, I think that's amazing. I don't want any boards just sitting with a whole bunch of vacancies. That wouldn't be my hope either.
Right.
But you always want to at least leave some space so hopefully other people can participate, you know? And I would hate for you to get on both and then have an applicant that was really passionate about it, but then not be able to get on for a number of years or something. So I'm just gonna take that into my decision and I just wanted to at least be transparent with you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Drew.
Going to the consent agenda, which is items three through 16H. Today, you can consider these items passed unanimously unless a separate vote call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on any of these items, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under citizen concerns. Remember to always state your name for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the August 21st and 25th city council minutes. Four is a resolution endorsing the national fitness campaign with the Saultland Historical Railroad Association and authorizing the city assistance for the installation of an outdoor fitness court on the railroad museum campus.
Mayor, can we ask Larry to? Come up. I just wanna get a little bit of a visual on this exercise pad or whatever. I don't know what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, it'll be, oh, it's Larry Obermeyer, Saultland Historic Railroad, Sioux City. It will be a flat pad approximately 70 feet long by 30 feet wide. And it'll be subdivided with a mural project in the middle. And then on one side, there is a fitness gym where there will be body weight lifts. And then as well, there will be what they call seven movements in seven minutes.
Yep.
And then there's some other amenities that go with stretching. And then on the other side of the murals, the studio part where we can then allow small businesses to come in and do yoga classes and wellness programs on that area there. We were approached with the idea of bringing this national fitness campaign studio to Sioux City. We would be the first one in the state of the Iowa if that comes about. And what we're looking at is this will help with the campground development, provides an amenity for that campground, especially when we're talking about wanting an upscale campground development. And many of your upscale users of RV parks are into fitness and wellness, so this will help them. But also with our trail loop that we have around the railroad museum campus. You know, being a grant writer, I gotta go out and talk to people, so I ask them what type of amenities we need to provide for the trail. And this has been one of those that have come up, the seven movement and seven minutes, the stretching and all of that. They're using our fence to stretch and that's just an injury waiting to happen. So I hope that kinda answers your course.
It does. I think it's really cool. I did go online and look it up, but there's different, they're not all the same. So I was wondering, you know, what the intention?
Yeah, I mean, they're up here. We are looking at the upscale. And the city will not have a financial obligation other than to help us get through, making sure we're meeting codes and we're got the right drainage.
And it's a $30,000 grant?
It's a $30,000 grant, but it's a $200,000 investment. So we're right now in the process of getting sponsorships as well as we've applied for a MURD grant.
That's your igniter, the 30,000?
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
I think it sounds wonderful.
Larry, I appreciate the contact. I appreciate the context. Cause I know, I mean, I've, I've looked at these different ones before because at one point in time, I was talking with a property owner about one on a lot downtown. I just didn't want this to be, you know, this one isolated area out there. And I didn't know where you were with the campground and the trails connections and things like that. I think it's gonna be a complimentary amenity, you know, should that all come to fruition. It'd be a great area to be able to experience the outdoors and have that. So hopefully one can leverage the other and you can make both of those happen, so.
Yeah, we intend to just be real briefly. When RagBri was north of here this summer, we had over 200 RagBri riders that came down to our facility and rode the trail out there.
Yeah.
And they were looking for stretching and other movement type things. So I think it will fit really well with what we're trying to do out there.
Great. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Five is a resolution adopting plans and specs for utility cleaning project. Six is a resolution approving a form of interim loan and disbursement agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority and authorizing payment of sewer revenue capital loan notes. Seven's a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for parks and recreation attendant and specialist. Eight is a resolution proposing to sell property at 301 King's Highway. The petitioners Ryan Ross and Oscar Sanchez Alvarez. Nine is actions relating to boards, commissions and committees. A is a motion accepting the Civil Service Commission annual report. B is a resolution appointing Jack Walsh to the Historic Preservation Commission. Ten are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the FAA for the gate two passenger boarding bridge project at the airport. B is a resolution accepting the submission of the local housing trust fund program application by the Sioux City Housing Trust Fund to the Iowa Finance Authority and approving the use of city funds as a match. C is a resolution approving the application of the Iowa Finance Authority Emergency Solutions Grant Program for street outreach to the homeless population.
Jill's coming up.
Mayor, I've invited Jill up to further explain exactly what this program is. It's a meaningful program to the community. And then just, just explain or clarify that the funding is good for 2026, but if you do everything right, it'll be renewed for 2027.
Jill Wanderscheid, Neighborhood Services Manager. I think that was pretty much it. But no. We are applying for both street outreach and also rapid rehousing funds. So street outreach is something we've done for the last couple of years. We have staff that are going out and engaging with those that are experiencing homelessness throughout our community, building those relationships. These are people that are typically very service resistant for whatever reason. So it does take some time to build those relationships and then get them into our system and making sure that they're being referred to services that we have available here. And then also with the rapid rehousing, this is also a program that we've run for quite some time. And that's been funded mostly through COVID funds, so we're excited for the opportunity to find some other funding sources that can help continue this on. That provides rental assistance for up to six months for those that are experiencing homelessness transitioning to being housed. And with that comes case management from our own staff. Armando and our staff provides a lot of that support for them to try to make sure that they're stabilized after those six months is up and they transition into covering their housing expenses themselves. So as Dan mentioned, if we do well, if we are awarded, we do well the first year, then we get awarded the second year as well. And that's how it's worked for street outreach in the past.
On the rapid rehousing, that has been successful for the most part. And what happens after six months?
Yes, absolutely. I don't have our exact percentage, but it's above 75% stay housed after we walk away.
Wonderful.
Programs?
Yes.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
E is a resolution approving an application to the US DOT Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program for the Berry Creek Channel redevelopment project. F is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with the IDOT for a grant for one light duty bus. G is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement to implement the public transit infrastructure grant agreement with IDOT for the passenger elevator replacement at the Martin Luther King Junior Transportation Center. Eleven are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporary closing various downtown alleys, September 12th through the 22nd, and temporarily closing sections of 4th and 5th Street on September 20th for the Vanguard Arts Alley Art Festival. B is a resolution temporary closing a section of 4th and Jones Streets on September 27th for the downtown tailgate party, or downtown tailgate event. C is a resolution temporary closing various streets in Morningside area on September 27th for the Starfest marching band competition. Twelve are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a fixed price proposal for driver training solutions for one driving simulator and one seat. B is a resolution approving change order number four to the contract with H&R Construction for the new utilities field office building project. I don't remember if this is the one. Some of these went way over 10% before they brought them to us, Mike. And will you reiterate to your staff that that's important to not let that happen? C is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Davis Rental Car for the lease of certain land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area at 2403 Aviation Boulevard. D is a resolution approving a contract with A&amp;F Construction for the transit maintenance garage parking lot improvement project. E is a resolution granting a permit to Metro Fiber Net to maintain underground fiber adjacent to 2616 through 2615 Hamilton Boulevard. F is a resolution granting a permit to Metro Fiber Net to maintain underground fiber adjacent to 1300 through 1505 West First Street. G is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the consulting services agreement with Bolton and Meck for the Conestar Park Destination Patio Project. H is a resolution approving a public right of way at grade crossing with Union Pacific Railroad Company for improvements at the 46th Street at grade crossing for the Plywood Trail Phase Three Project. I is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with quality striving for the airport airfield painting and blasting project. Thirteen are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving a payment to OBG for repairs to the Tyson Event Center. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Bainbridge Construction for the Elk Creek Road Construction Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Nystrom Electric Company for the South Bridge Water Treatment Plant High Service Pump Number Two Adjustable Frequency Drive Project. D is a resolution approving a second payment settlement statement for the PFAS class action litigation. E is a resolution approving a partial settlement of tort claims, authorizing payments and approving repair estimates. Fourteen are repairs are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to GovConnection for the Extreme Network Switches and Supporting Accessories. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hyman for firefighter turnout gear. Fifteen are applications for alcohol license. Sixteen beer board commission and committee minutes. That ends the consent agendas. Is there anyone to be heard on any of those meetings?
Mayor, I'm standing on item 13E on the tort claims. Conflict of interest.
Passes five zero. Seventeen's a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions of August 26th. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance amending chapter 8.24 offenses relating to property and chapter 25.03 Development Standards of the Municipal Code. The city of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard?
Paul Koskovich. The P&amp;Z decided to, I think, allow the fence, including the barbed wire, as long as it's within the property line to be moved up. Is that correct? The issue at hand is that, you know, you drive down the medians right now, or the right of ways right now, and they're full of mid-American boxes. They're full of Metronet boxes. They're full of fire hydrants. They're full of, they're full of everything. And constantly every day, including us, our contractors working in the right of way. And last I checked, it's not holding anybody up. And they're able to work around all those utility boxes and whatnot and barbed wire included. And if we didn't have a problem in this city with crime and theft, we wouldn't need barbed wire. But it's critical. And I just don't understand how we can allow those other items. But for some reason, a firm in Houston that the city relied upon in 2015 to change the code knows more than everyone else. And I just don't agree with this. I think barbed wire can be pointed out. Our fence can be on the property line, just like it is all over town on several properties. And again, nobody has a problem. I checked with Chris during our planning and zoning meeting if any contractors have denied working in the right of way or had any accidents in the right of way because of the barbed wire that points out. And he reported not that he could comment on or knew about. What is the issue here? In addition, I-
Why would, why would we allow anything to infringe on the right of way? Do we don't allow, you can't build on the right of way? You can't, why, why would that be a problem, Paul?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's just like earlier in the meeting here, right? We approved Metronet to come into our right of way, install, no, 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 just wait, let me finish. Come into our right of way, right? And install their utility. And they destroy people's lawns. They don't care about what they do. And they're just allowed to work in the right of way and put their product in the right of way. Why can a owner of his property not be allowed to protect it and also be in the right of way with six inches of barbed wire?
Because utilities have a little different law they operate under than you do. Mid-America has a franchise.
And we can't control that, even if I don't want that.
Sure, but-
Cause I understand what you're saying too. It's like, I don't want those all of the places that they put them either. But the state of Iowa dictates.
The reason I brought it up, guys, was in the planning and zoning meeting here, Chris had brought up that the, he referenced one of the boards here in town. He had reviewed this and they mentioned that it could be a hazard of somebody traveling in the right of way. And that's what really has brought this on to me, is if we're relying on a board, I think it was the Travel Advisory Board is what it was.
Active transportation.
Yeah. If we're relying on those folks and their opinion, and they're really worried about six inches of barbed wire, how are they not worried about all these hazards I just mentioned beforehand?
Because I think if someone was cycling or biking or something, you know, in that right of way and would hit something and fling them into that, I guess I would be a little more worried than, about barbed wire than buried utilities.
Okay, but right, but you're not worried about the, the fire hydrant? You're not worried about the, the 12-inch wide wood post that holds up the power line, right? You're not worried about, you're not worried about the Metronet box that's-
No, I didn't say that.
Things that are allowed because of, this guy runs Mid-America.
Sure.
He, we can't tell him necessarily where he can go put a pole as long as it's in the right of way because he has a franchise.
I'm simply saying it was brought up, right, that it's a hazard. And my comment to that is, is how it could be any more a hazard than all these utility boxes that are already in the right of way.
Well, we're gonna try to control, I guess, the ones we can and not the ones we can, but-
But again, there's, there's several, several multiple fences in town already, and they're not causing any problems. And their, their, their barbed wire is pointed out and their fence is on the property line. And we're not having any issues. The only, the only reason this got changed in 2015 was not because of a council member, not because of a, of a, of a department head. It was because we relied on some firm that this city decided to pay to change the code book.
But someone had to give them the direction to hire them to do.
No, Chris, that's what Chris said, the planning zoning, right? It was just the firm in Houston that they just suggested.
Specializes in code reform, I'm sure.
Right, but they had to have some direction. It had to come before council before it was enacted. But here, here's what I want to ask. This, um, I want to choose my words. This isn't good enough for you?
No, cause here's the thing. It comes back to we're getting picked on, okay? Do you guys seen the jail? Guess what?
It's not about the jail. I'm just asking you, right?
Yes, it affects-
About this.
It affects us. Because now what we're gonna do is, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take this barbed wire like this and we're gonna go like this. That's how big of a waste this is. That's how silly this is. Over six inches. It's literally six inches.
This and I'll do this. I've been by it. I've seen it.
It's silly.
And you asked for the barbed wire to be allowed to be turned out.
We didn't ask. We put it out like every other place in town, 80% of fences.
Because you were unaware of the ordinance from 2015.
No, because it's safer for protecting our property.
Because the fence company that you hired was unaware of the city's ordinance.
Because if they were aware, they would have moved it in six inches. They would have moved the fencing.
No, it's, it's not even allowed to be tilted out.
Nonetheless, our fence is moved in already because the DOT was giving us problems on their side of the fence.
Are they picking on you as well?
Of course they are.
There's a common thread.
This is just really disappointing, Paul.
It is, it is. They wanted to call us for trespassing, right? They, we were on their property because I cleaned up some trees. Next thing you know, the next week, one of their rigs is out there surveying. It's parked right in our lawn, but that's okay.
I know, but it's processes that everyone has and we all have to follow them. We have to follow them. You have to follow them. You asked us for consideration on this. We took it back. We're giving this new code and yet it's still not good enough.
I know, because, because it's over six inches, right?
You're right. You do know. It's never gonna be good enough.
It's over six inches, right?
But then why are you throwing a fit over six inches? You don't want us to.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna maybe go like this with the barbed wire. It's a waste. And my last thing is, it's the fact that we have, one of our biggest projects that's under the most scrutiny in the city is the jail. And somehow that got past Chris and Ron's nose. Same thing with Mid-America, another huge project. But somehow, somehow, a little Costco Murphy project just somehow flips the radar switch at this town. Somehow. That's the problem.
You're not on my radar until you're texting me. I promise you that.
I know, but we're sure on Chris and, Chris and Ron's radar. Their car just finds our job sites. So again, all I'm saying is it's just silly that we're gonna go like this, six inches, right?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else be heard?
My name is Ken Kriever. I live on, in Leeds.
Are you speaking on 18, sir?
Oh, no, sir. I'm sorry.
Give it just a little bit and we'll come back to you under citizen concerns, okay? Thank you. Anyone else be heard on 18?
So Andrew, so all of the fencing, none of the fencing that's up would be grandfathered in? It all has to be changed under the?
No, I believe it. The current stuff would be grandfathered in.
Just new fencing?
It's new fencing.
It's new fencing.
Yeah. I believe the Transportation Advisory Committee suggested, you know, a pretty decent setback for barbed wire. We, after our discussion, we said as long as it's within the property line, the barbed wire, which makes it a lot closer, which is what Paul was referring to, six inches. That's what we thought seemed fair.
It tips out. It's on a cradle and it leans out. It's got an angle to it.
Yeah, right, right of way is, is right of way. It's not private property. I believe a lot of the other places he was referring to, it's on their property already anyway, so.
It was prior to 2015, the one that he gave me.
Well, not your new fence, but.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody that's passed five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second and third.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Nineteen's an ordinance that-
Chris is up here.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to elaborate. The ordinance that you just voted on included the two and a half foot setback to face out and a five foot when adjacent to a sidewalk. If you wanted to amend it to just be in the property, you would have to amend it to be what planning and zoning recommended.
Well, I wish we'd have known that. I'll move to amend 18 to what the recommendation of the planning and zoning is.
We'll have to reconsider because the votes-
I'll make a motion to reconsider. Next time, please come up when we're talking about it, cause, okay.
I'll second the motion to reconsider.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
I'll move to reconsider to the recommendation of the planning and zoning. Do we have to do three readings of that then, or is?
No, I would just ask that you vote on the second and third reading, because you've already passed first reading.
Okay, okay.
We're reconsidering 17. That one, the, we just did first reading today.
Eighteen.
So this will make it anything within the property line, Chris, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
That's what your conditions were? Not the two and a half or five foot, but just saying, look, as long as it's, as long as the barbed wire and everything is within the property line and it's not hanging over, you're fine.
Correct, correct. All elements of the fence and barbed wire have to be within the property line.
So Hedy will walk it through, first reading, and then motion to waive the rule in second and third reading.
Deal.
Okay. On first reading, Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Now I have to move second and third again, as revised.
Second?
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Thanks, Chris.
19th is an ordinance vacating a portion of the property adjacent to 4510 Van Buren Street. The petitioners Barry Bokey and Melissa Eihorn, P&amp;Z recommends approval to vacation of Madison Street, but denial to vacation of 45th Street. The first consideration was approved August 25th. I'll move second reading.
Second?
And you guys voted to vacate 45th Street also?
Exactly. But if I'm doing second reading, we've already made that.
Correct. It's second reading of what we passed in the first time.
Second reading of what we passed.
Correct.
It's recon, it's considering the original...
No. Oh, okay. We already passed it as the vacation of 45th Street.
Yes, sorry, because planning and zoning had recommended just Madison Street, is that correct?
Right.
And then you amended on the floor, yes, to just do, to do both.
Right.
Yes. As presented.
So second reading would be as voted on last week?
Yes, unless the council would like to change that after the hearing.
That's right. We have people that want to talk about it, it looks like. Do you want to talk about this item, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no.
Hi, my name's Brian Reynolds, born in Sioux City, went right out to Leeds, still there, 4524 Madison Street. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Committee for doing a outstanding job unanimously, all voting not to vacate 45th Street, not to vacate it. And so that's what they specialize in, and they did a very good job. All right, now, look at, this ain't no more than, uh, you're discriminating against me and another neighbor, and you're landlocking us out of our property. All right? So he comes up to his property and he runs smack into a six-foot bank and he goes to the right and there's his garage. The only access he's got to his property is 45th Street to get to the side. He's got septic tanks, any kind of septic tank replacement, uh, you know, work on it, foundation work, whatever. You have to have access from 45th Street to his property. All right? And then there's my property. Fifty foot away, you guys give these access, access to their property and to build a new house. And fifty foot the other way, you're not giving me access to my property to build a new house. They've got over two acres, they bought, they, they got over an acre of land, and with Madison Street, a whole city block vacated combined, they have over two acres to build a house. A normal person has 120 foot by 40 foot or 60 foot wide to build a house. They have more than enough land to put their house in. It's just a land grab to get that 45th Street, and 45th Street has a purpose. First of all, I've been in talks over the last year with Lieber Construction, Rod Lieber. I have that parcel land at 7.335 acres and turning it into, at some point, a housing development for Leeds. Four blocks away from Leeds Elementary School, St. Michael's, six blocks from Walmart, Leeds needs a housing development. But at the very least, if we can't get all that to happen with, I suppose, you guys and all, whatever it takes, there's gonna be four houses in my four corners of that property. One of them's gonna be in that southeast corner, which 45th Street goes into. When you shut that down and that house is out of there, I lose one-fourth of the value of my property. Damages. All right? To me and my family. Furthermore, to say I got all these accesses as it is agriculture is false. They're telling you I can go through here and here and there. The parcels to the north of my house are separate parcels. I bought all of my parcels of land separately, and I'm gonna sell them separately. And to tell me that I gotta cross over other parcels to get into that land, to that field, as soon as I saw it to you, Bob, how you gonna get into that field? You ain't. There's only one legal way, as it stands, and that's how it was when I purchased it, to get into my parcel land, and that's 45th Street. And that was platted back in 1898. That was a 14-acre field out there. The lady from Morningside College, she died, she owned it. She split, let me and Jerry Williams split it. Well, how you gonna split it? Because there was two accesses, one on Jefferson Street and one on 45th. So he got the one on Jefferson Street and they split it at 45th Street, and my entry is 45th Street still today. And if you're gonna put another entry in somewhere else, the average, there's probably a five-foot bank for average. Now you're talking, you're gonna have to get Lieber Construction in there with a, pay for all the heavy equipment to move all this land upward, lost the land, a covert in, gates in to keep snowmobiles, four-wheelers off. And then you would have to travel two blocks to get to that house over other people's land. That's just, it's silly.
You, are you expecting to have 45th Street opened and as a street?
Yes, 45th Street moving forward is gonna be big. I mean, once, I don't know how Rod's gonna work everything.
Who are you proposing that would do that?
Rod Lieber.
But who's gonna pay for it?
The street.
The street? Well, that has to be determined. The street's already there. It's just a, it's just a size of a lot. My goodness, that's, it's, it's, 46th Street's gravel. I mean, that's just so many truckloads of gravel and you're in.
I understand that, but 45th Street's got topography issues.
The berm.
According to what Gordon said last week, is that right?
It's got what?
It has huge topography issues to actually put a street in there.
No, it don't. How come they go in there to farm their land?
No, I'm going by what the engineer said.
Well, I'll tell you what, they just get in and out of there, they could explode, so I don't know how that's so. And it wouldn't take a whole lot to, Rod could tell you that, to plumb it up.
There's, uh, Gordon Fair, city engineer, there is a, uh, about a 10% slope if you were to make a street there. So it is, it is doable to make a street.
Well, yeah, but you don't like those, but anyway.
Uh, no, but we have, yeah.
But I'm just saying, who's gonna pay for that? Because the city hasn't done one of those deals. I mean...
Well, I'm worried about what's in front of me. I'm worried about the loss and the value of my property. Who's gonna pay for that? Who, who suggested all the, uh, uh, the expenses incurred on the other side to put in something I don't have to put in? I mean, are they gonna pay for that? I mean, they're good with everybody's money. Let's, let's throw the shoe on the other foot. Let's use their same tactic. They can come in from the other, other side of their property, shut the front of theirs down, they can come up through 44th Street, let them pay for their own expenses. Why should they expect me? I just went to my mailbox one day and here's a letter to come in and changes the whole thing around for me. You know, 45th Street is, they can use it, my neighbor can use it, and moving forward, everybody else can use it.
Okay.
It's, it's just so simple. I mean, you don't need, it's just a land grab. Why would you need to vacate 45th Street when they already got, they got a whole city block you just vacated for them and they got another over an acre something? So that's, that's a solid, and I don't know the exact number, but at least two acres. And nobody else, everybody else just gets a lot.
Is there anybody else to be heard?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we're having this meeting.
And then once again, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I want that on record.
They're good guys.
Yeah. Except for one and one.
Yeah.
I'm Jamie Freido. I own the house at 4506 Madison Avenue.
Can we, one second, Jamie, I apologize. Can we pull the map up, Chris, if you don't mind? Just, that helped last time for us to be able to acclimate kind of who's where and what their perspective is, if you don't mind, Jamie, just a second. I know, I know you guys know this area well. We're trying to go off of, you know, the maps and recommendations, everything else.
Back room, so bear with me just a moment.
Okay?
There we go. It's right where the...
All right, boss.
Yep.
Where was the first gentleman's place? He, he spoke.
Ron owns the property located here. The north-south, uh, Madison Street was vacated. He owns that and this portion right here.
So he vacated Madison?
North of what's being requested, yep. The, both these are requesting 45th Street and Madison going south.
But why did we vacate Madison to the...
But I'm saying the gentleman that just spoke, sir, you vacated Madison, that you would've had access, is that right?
Correct, yep. Requested the vacation of that to add that to his property.
When was that? You remember?
Long after I started, so early or late 2000s.
Oh, okay.
Or 2010.
And just to refresh my memory, too, before we get into it, 44th Street, uh, I believe Mr. Bokey had said that there's some very challenging terrain accessing.
Forty-fifth.
No, 44th.
Oh, okay.
At the bottom, that, that was the difficulty in accessing his property from that direction, if I correctly...
About a 50-foot grade change about this location and about this location.
Oh.
Forty-third, I mean, up from 44th would not, you maybe will get utilities across, but as far as a road, unlikely.
Gotcha. All right, Jamie, sorry.
So if you see right next to my property, I'm, I'm landlocked if all that gets, if all that gets approved.
Chris, can you show us Jamie's property? Okay.
And so right now, you get...
I just have access to my property from that access road, that's it. And then when you get to the end of it, there's like a six-foot bank. And you cannot access the back of the house, only from 45th.
And so I guess, I mean, nothing would change, right?
You'd still have access to the access road, right?
Yeah, you would...
I have access to the access road, but...
So that wouldn't change?
No.
It's just, and if 45th vacated, then would, they wouldn't, they just wouldn't put a street there in the future?
Well, then I wouldn't be able to reach the back of my house where the septic tank is. That's on septic, it's not on city utilities. So...
What do you mean you wouldn't be able to reach it?
There's a garage right there. You can't, you can't get through there, there's a retaining wall.
So how do you currently get to it?
If we needed to get there, it would be through going down the 45th.
Going 45th to Matt, where it intersects with Madison?
Except for you can buy half of 45th Street.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's kind of a, kind of a burden on me. I don't, I mean, I'd much rather you guys, the city, keep it, because then I, I can buy it, yeah, but then I have to maintain it. Don't necessarily want to do that either. But even if I do buy that half, do I still have to, could it cause issues going forward for me to get to that backside of my place? I mean, I, if there was a compromise, maybe there's no retaining walls or anything put there, and I get a permanent easement to get to the back of my house.
I guess I don't understand what, how you cannot get to the back of your house.
Because he can't get a truck or ba, a backhoe through to go back and...
Because there's the tree.
He doesn't have enough space there because of the wall.
I mean, before you guys decide fully, I, I suggest all you guys go out there, just take a look, before you actually make a decision. And then if you feel like there's ways I can get back there, by all means, let me know what it is. But otherwise, if there's gonna be a compromise...
I'm, I'm not saying that you can.
No, I'm not, I know.
I'm just trying to understand why you can't, if that happens.
I, I get that. But I would ask that you guys take a look at it.
I own the landline of that house. The only, only place he's got is 45th Street.
For purposes of... Because you had it vacated for your purposes, right?
He's speaking, right.
Because you had Madison vacated for your purposes.
No, I'm in to save this house.
He needs to come up to the podium.
Sir! Sir, you have to come up here if you're gonna speak or wait.
Well, somebody else has the floor, sir. He's using...
You just have to sit and we'll get to you.
Yeah.
But we gotta do it so the clerk can record the minutes.
Yep.
So, yeah, basically, I would prefer that it not be vacated. I don't want to buy, buy half of it. I don't want to have to maintain it. I do think it should remain a, a city street. I don't know what the future holds for that area, but I would like to be able to access my property on that side.
Well, Gordon went and said, Chris, where's the nearest utilities to there? To this? I just want to revisit that.
Up there. Water and sewer right there.
And most of these people have septic up in this?
And so...
Are they within our clean water guideline that should something happen, they're gonna have to get on utilities?
No, that's beyond, they're beyond...
It's beyond the two, 200? Okay.
This property here develops?
Right.
No sewer until down about... Oops, sorry. I'm new here.
You said that in the last meeting.
It's down about here somewhere, down at the bottom of the screen. So it's considerably a longer distance for sanitary.
Compared to where?
Compared to right here.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Nope, can't go uphill.
So Jamie, right now, you would, if that happened and you had to access, you would just go on that Forty-fifth? Just what that is now to access, to go around and into that?
Yep. Right before we bought it, the septic tank was replaced. It had to be replaced. It was my understanding that that's how they accessed it. So I don't, if something happens or I have to have it fixed again, I'm kind of up a creek.
That further explains why P&amp;Z's recommendation was seven zero.
Yes.
And typically, over the years with planning and zoning, if someone has that access, that only access, we don't vacate. What's your address, sir?
The 4506 Madison.
Which is funny, because Madison isn't there. You know what I mean?
Yeah, when we bought it, it took me a minute to find it. Kidding.
That house?
Right.
So it's our, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
You have anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Now, if you want to come back up, sir, you can. You want to come back up, sir?
Well, sure, I can brush up on that issue. The city, that property got condemned. And there's no way they could get that, there was no room to get that, to get it uncondemned unless... The guy told me, he says, well, he goes, you can vacate Madison Street and they would get half of, like you said, the half, they would get that half. That would give them enough feet for their leach line. That's how Madison Street got vacated, so I petitioned and vacated it. And then that's a whole nother story. That belonged, in 1898, it was vacated. And it belonged to the land that I owned, but I made a deal with the city and we just settled it that way. And I saved that house by taking it upon myself to go ahead and vacate that, so that house could get the land that it has. And that's how Madison Street got vacated. You know, it wasn't that I was, I wanted to do nothing, but that... Anyway, that property, that land was purchased before any of that other stuff. And my access was Forty-fifth Street. I bought that property with only one access, Forty-fifth Street. There was, there is no other access. That was the one, when I purchased the property, that was, I don't know how you say it, given to me or given to that property. And if it's sold that way, it still goes that way. The rest of the property I own is different parcels and separate, has nothing to do with that field. And so taking Forty-fifth Street away from that field is huge. That's just huge, for any future, for houses over there. And you talk about the sewer, a block away is Harrison Street. And that's where you could hook into the sewer. And when they went up Harrison Street and put all them houses in, within one month, they were all sold. I watched, boop, 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 like hotcakes. But anyway, that's what we're talking about now. And regardless, I lose a fourth of the value of that property if I can't get a home over there. And then there's other damages, let's just say we didn't even do that, start, just start putting in other entries. Lost thousands of dollars. And that's, who's going to pay for that? Not me. I mean, somebody else wants it, and if it legally ends up that way, well, then somebody else has got to pay, pay me to get into that. Otherwise, buy the whole property. Because that's, I bought it with that entry. And so if you ain't going to pay for another entry, buy the whole, buy the whole thing.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Barry Bulkey, 4103 Jefferson Street. I spoke to you guys last time. I'm just curious, it was said that the only sanitary sewer was on Jefferson Street, but Harrison Street, I mean, that subdivision's right there, which looked a lot closer. So that was just something that I noticed that I was kind of confused about. When it comes to the, like you guys brought up, your building a street for a single house, that was through, like, what was discussed, the 50-foot incline and everything else? The last thing I have is, yeah, I want to buy Forty-fifth Street. Like, I want to give the city over $10,000 because I'm buying Forty-fifth Street and Madison, which was so that Madison wasn't going to get landlocked, and I'm going to give that to you guys for your budget. I tried to discuss this with potential neighbors and talk to them. Was clearly met with hostility. I'm trying to be friendly. And so yet again, I just wanted to emphasize why I'm really confused that I'm buying a, it's a field. Like, well, it's grassland, it's grass. And the concern that I can build my house anywhere else is, this is right off the alleyway, it's easy access. And if I was to tear all the trees out of Madison Street to come up, I'm not just tearing up Madison. I'm coming up that Forty-fourth Street, which was also insinuated that I'm having to ask the city then to tear up all the trees on that one. I'm trying to do what's the simplest for my house. I'm just trying to build my house closest to the north side of the property. This makes it a lot easier. I'm just trying to get along. I didn't realize this was going to be an issue, so I just wanted to speak before you guys make it very clear. There is no maliciousness in this, there's no anger. And I really appreciate your time on something that I thought was going to be very simple of, I'm buying a street that nobody's using. Thank you.
Are you kidding? Come on, welcome to the city council. This is not simple, man, come on.
I'm being honest.
Yes.
No, I, Barry, I appreciate it.
Mr. Bulkey, I've got one question for you. So it seems like the biggest holdup would be the house on Madison Avenue off of Forty-fifth. And what was mentioned was, if you'd be willing to grant an easement, so that you'd have access to the septic tank?
I mean, I'm willing to talk to people.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to write stuff out or anything so that that way liability and everything else. Like, like I said, I don't plan on doing anything with that property that would impede anything down that street. It's, I'm just, I want an easement for my house so that I can get closer to the north. I'm not tearing out as many trees, I'm not destroying what looks nice up there. Like you said, go up there and look, it's a beautiful place. I'm lucky to get this property. And so therefore, it's like, I'm trying not to disturb as much as possible, it's easier. But yeah, if that was something that they wanted to discuss with us, like, that's why we went to all the properties originally. Most people weren't home or they're out doing more fun things than just hanging out at home. But that is a discussion that if it's just a matter of like driving down there when, God forbid, a septic tank goes out, that's a whole different story. So yeah, that is, I'm not that kind of person. Like, I get along, so...
I'm going to withdraw my motion for today. If you'll take a second. And I'm going to drive out there and see, I don't know.
I was going to say...
You know, in fairness to everybody, this property's been, you've had that property since 1999. If you were going to develop it, I wish something would happen. Because there's a lot of area up in the north side of Leeds that's primed for development, but it's not happening, so...
So would the council like to defer?
I'm going to move that now. I'll move to defer for a week.
O'Kane?
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Glazer, you want to go for a road trip?
Yeah, I'll drive.
Yeah, throwing me in the back of your truck, man, sorry.
All right, thank you. It'll be back next week. In ordinance, Twenty's and ordinance amending chapter 25.02, zoning districts and land uses in chapter 25.07, definitions of the municipal code. The petitioners, the city of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends first consideration was approved on August 25th. 25th, I'll move the second reading. Second.
Wade Schultz Planning, we did take your considerations into consideration last week and did rewrite the definition for new automobile sales. So there is an amended version of the ordinance, if you wish to consider that. That would, we believe will take care of the concerns you had with somebody possibly using a side-by-side or a golf cart dealership as a way to circumvent the ordinance.
So is that, so we need to amend first?
Correct. There are two attachments. Attachment A is the ordinance as was presented last week. Attachment B is the proposed amended ordinance with the definitional change. So the council would need to amend the ordinance on the floor to include that if you wish to do so.
Yeah, I would move to amend to include the attachments that were furnished by the legal department. Second. That doesn't have to go back to P&amp;Z?
It's just a definitional change. You could certainly send it back if you would like them to take another look at it.
No, I just want to make sure they're fine. All right, thank you.
On the amendment, Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Kane?
Hi.
And then we can vote for the second reading this way, right? Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Wade.
Thanks to the mayor for thinking of golf carts.
Well, it's, I know they're springing up all over the country. You don't have to go online very much to figure it out.
So what's funny, Mayor, is you said that, and I drove up to Okoboji, and there's one right on the south side of town.
Exactly.
It's a car lot, but it has a whole row of golf carts first thing.
Yeah, it's, you go on Facebook and they want you to buy dealerships.
A golf cart?
Okay, now, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule for the third reading? I'll move that. Second.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Kane?
I'll move third reading. Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Kane?
Hi.
Shaner?
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Your service. Twenty-one is a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Pulaski Drainage Improvement Project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Pass is five zero. Twenty-two is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the terminal roof replacement project, phase three at the airport. I'll move it. Second. Hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Hearing is closed. Pass is five zero. Twenty-three is a hearing and resolution adopting the revisions of the administrative plan for the Section Eight Housing Choice voucher program. I'll move that. Second. Hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is five zero. Citizen Concerns first is David Flores. Come up and tell us what you want to talk about.
How's it going? My name's David Flores. Do you need anything else from me, or?
Nope.
Cool. Got a little speech here for y'all. So yeah, my name's David Flores and I'm with the Nameless Project. We're a collective whose goal is to bridge the gap between city resources and the communities that need them. As a new organization, we've been doing a lot of research into exactly what those gaps are. While some may seem out of reach, one item does seem to be within sight with the proper involvement and commitment from the city. Downtown Sioux City does not have any public restroom, and there's a documented need for one or more. Our current environment is not ideal for anyone, businesses and citizens alike. Many businesses have taken away their open restroom policy due to influx of unwanted behavior by some of the folks that are using them. While this is understandable, it leaves those with a need for a restroom empty-handed. The use of a restroom isn't a luxury, it is a human necessity. To help alleviate this issue, the Nameless Project held a fundraiser to host a porta potty at 104 Streets Private Properties. Even though, even in its short time of its deployment, we have seen the benefits of its placement. Our suggestion would be to deploy a self-cleaning restroom. We have some research on that. Having at least one would minimize the number of incidents that would occur in the downtown area. Having more than one allows for downtown to be more approachable for citizens and visitors. A self-clean restroom would remove some of the general maintenance that comes with this public service. This proposal ties right in with Sioux City's current strategic plan. I had some notes on those. We, for a grow Sioux City, a restroom downtown makes our downtown area more approachable. For value Sioux City, a restroom is a basic necessity. Anyone in this busy part of town should be able to access this basic need. Connect Sioux City, this effort shows that our local government is willing to work with its citizens' concerns. Protect Sioux City, this allows privacy for citizens and in our downtown area. Include Sioux City, some cities may not have access to this need, but being part of this, of our city's population, they deserve it. I have contacted members of this chamber regarding this proposal, unfortunately with no response. My hope is that after hearing this idea, you may reach out to further discuss the possibility of this venture. Greatly appreciate you guys' time today.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying after, I'd love to talk to you about that.
Yeah, I'd greatly appreciate that. Thanks.
Sir, did you want to speak? Yep, come on up.
My name is Ken Krieger, and I apologize for speaking on a turn earlier.
No, no, you're fine.
I was a little confused on the process. I have a travel trailer that is stored just off of Floyd Boulevard in Leeds where I live. Unfortunately, I cannot get it to my house as there's an obstacle course of low-hanging limbs all along routes. So my process is to load the truck up, proceed to the camper, then move everything into the camper, and prior to heading out. A few weeks ago, we had a two-week camping trip planned, so that meant a lot more stuff. So I elected to pull the RV up to the house, load it up, and go from there. The trip up there was uneventful because I got there without any scrapes or scratches on the vehicle or on the camper. Unfortunately, when I was leaving, I was pointed in a different direction, so I had to take a different route back to Floyd. This led to damage to the RV due to low-hanging limbs that marred the RV. For context, the RV stands 10 feet tall with about two feet of air conditioning, et cetera, on top of it. So I think the city ordinance is for 14 feet of clearance. So, but the marring was done at about the nine, nine-and-a-half foot level along the side of the camper. So I spent a better part of a day buffing, trying to remove scratches, waxing, et cetera. I got a lot of it out with the exception of the decals and metal part of the awning armature. That would have to be fixed by replacing the decals or repainting. So what I'm really looking for is the ordinance to be enforced. You know, while garbage trucks and the like may not be concerned themselves with scuffs and scratches to the tops of their equipment, I am concerned, all I ask is that the current ordinance in place be enforced.
Where did you run into the trees at? What street?
It's all along between Polk, Tyler, Fillmore, those areas, all those streets.
On Forty-first Street?
Off, well, all the way coming down, so just off of Floyd, there's within about two...
You're talking the streets themselves?
Yes, the side streets off of Floyd going up, yes. And like I said, I was able to use the old route that the DOT, when it was in existence over there, to get to it. Once I got to my house, my camper was turned in the wrong direction to backtrack, so I had to go through some other streets, and that's when the damage occurred. All right.
Yeah, I don't know how we do that, Mike, but can you talk to your tree trimming crew and see? Let's see what we can do.
Thank you for your time.
Responsible.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else be heard?
David, while you're here, I just wanted to at least address what you had brought up, because I believe in at least, talking to you about it while you're here. And I didn't get any correspondence or I didn't remember seeing an email, so if I missed something, I apologize. We get a lot of correspondence, so I'm sorry if I missed something. I'll get back to you. I would tell you that, look, I serve on the Downtown Partners Committee. I spend time downtown shopping and dining and going to all kinds of events throughout our downtown. I understand your plight and your need for basic human decency to be able to have public restrooms for individuals to be able to utilize them. I hope you know that I do. I do have a lot of concerns over the cleanliness or the ability to keep them clean and not be damaged, not be trashed, not be defaced, all kinds of different, yeah, you can come up. All kinds of different things. And what I would base that off of is just my experience with even our parks, you know, and our park system. And so that's the concern I have is, is where do you put those things? How do you encourage or enforce, you know, there to not be more issues by having them placed? And I think some of those things are things that I'm continually thinking about is location, as well as just making sure they're not further defaced, because I know our Parks and Rec Department, it's difficult to stay on top of just the restrooms in those parks.
Well, I'm aware.
Yeah, and I want them to be maintained, I want them to be utilized, I want them to where, I don't care who you are, a kid or anyone, to be able to use those restrooms during the day, you know, when they're at a park or something. And I know that there are plenty of places that we should have more restrooms, especially along trail systems and other things. I mean, I get that. So I didn't, I just, that's where I was coming from.
No, I appreciate that. Reason to follow up with that, right? So there was recently a project that was approved downtown, right? There's these speakers that are put up there. It was like a $60,000 venture. I mean, that's your budget there. You know, you can allocate those, what purpose is that music out there really serving? To allow somebody to go and, you know, use the restroom around the corner with some background music? I mean, that's, I mean, there's ways to allot the budget, right? There's always ways to do it. I have a hard time believing that we couldn't. And I say that as we maintain this porta potty, right? We, this Nameless Project is a group of individuals that have been, again, we're actively trying to...
I'm following you on social, I mean, I get it, I am watching.
Oh, excellent, no.
I'm aware and I appreciate, I'm just saying, like, that's, I know where my concern is.
No, right.
And also thinking about budgets differently. I mean, the music project was more of a downtown quality-of-life amenity. Now, you could make the argument that not having people publicly urinating or defecating is a public amenity, I understand, or quality-of-life amenity. But I'm just thinking through, you know, where different funding mechanisms are coming from and how you keep them sightly.
Sure, and I mean, this is beyond the scope of, you know, one meeting, right? But I do, I do believe that there's, that there are ways to do that. I mean, other cities do it. We're not that big of a city. Unfortunately, the homeless population has grown to a significant amount, especially in the downtown area, especially in an area where, you know, we, we'd like to take pride in. And again, adding music to the solution is like, you know, using an air freshener for a really smart place.
But we don't pay for the music. But we don't pay for the music here.
Yeah, that was a different, it wasn't a city thing.
Well, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, that's not a city function, just so you know.
Oh, well, thanks, I mean, that still doesn't take away from my, my argument regardless, right? I mean, we're still, again, I mean, I mean, I can go on to other projects, I mean, my apologies for not having my, my sources here, but.
No, no, that's fine.
It, it can be done, again, it's, it's an effort. I mean, even our organization itself has been like, hey, if something like that would come up, we would be willing to help. It's, it's not one of those like, hey, we, the, the want and the, and the need are both strong enough out that I think we, it could be done. And again, it would help, for, for, just for, for the example, right, the, the place that we have it out downtown right now, it's fourteen oh four, uh, Fourth Street, right, right behind the old Francis Canteen Hardline slash Winnies, right? There's a tiny park there, right? So before that, within at least a couple months of we had it now, there's, at least from what we've seen, there's been a, a decline in, uh, folks using the rest of there publicly, right? 'Cause you'd go out there and occasionally, you know, see people either using it or you see the aftermath, right? So again, in, in that short time, and, you know, the, the homeless community here, there's, it's, they're almost like their own, uh, we could say, uh, I don't wanna say family, right? But they, they, they talk amongst each other, right? But it, I, I almost feel like there's almost a respect that comes there after talking to a few of them, of saying, hey, we put this up for you, for you guys and it's been taken care of. We haven't had these messes that, you know, and mind you, it's been a small amount of time, but mind you, I would foresee that if we were to maintain this, I don't, I don't think we would see that, especially with how we're getting involved with the community. I mean, we're looking to be out there, you know, uh, feet on ground and talking to all these folks and letting them know, hey, we, we, we are here for you and we are here to help you. And I think if we were to take that approach, uh, there would be much respect to that, so.
I understand, and I think we can continue the conversation and see what is a good happy medium. I would love to see the examples you have of other communities, you know, and what they've done, but I just wanted you to at least know some of my initial hesitations or things that I think you have to work through in order to have those conversations.
Valid concerns, I think those are probably the initial concerns that, uh, they presented when we put them in the property. Was, hey, what are we gonna do when we wake up and there's a guy in the, in the porta-potty, right?
Yep.
I, I understand, so, yeah, we appreciate the time.
Thanks, David.
Anyone else be heard?
Hello, my name is Deb Willer, I live at twenty-eight twenty Mulberry Court. And, um, a little over a month ago, late hours of August fifth, we had that water main break and, uh, it was a mess. It was a mess. Uh, for a little over an hour, I had water coming into my home. It was brown, brown water. And I just wanna make sure that, that something is gonna be done to fix kind of the area there. I mean, we've had a lot of, of water main brains, uh, breaks in that area. I've been there eight years and I know they've done repairs at least three different times on the street. And so it's just, I just wanna, first of all, one of the things I should've said, first of all, too, was I wanna thank Ron Engel, he helped us a lot. You know, he was there at two fifteen in the morning, you know, I was visiting with him. And he says, we're here, behind you, the city's gonna take care of this, you know, we're gonna get everything, you know, taken care of. That's great, but I wanna know, how are we gonna make sure that this doesn't happen again? I mean, the water main broke and got into the sewage line and flooded our homes.
I don't know the answer to that, but Mike, Julie and Alex serve on that committee, so will you guys work with Gordon and Mike and see what?
When we can look at the, I mean, I was thinking that it's like you can, we can look at the age of that and when replacement was and what that area looks like, but unfortunately, I mean, Gordon's not here, but I think, and I hear Dave Carney's voice in the back of my head, that, you know, our infrastructure is, is aging, it's incredibly aged and you are having more and more of those failures. What I will say is that I think we've tried to proactively address and replace some of those through various projects, whether it's American Rescue Plan dollars or otherwise, to replace those and try to be proactive for some of those older, older ones, you know, there was one on Pier Street that was experiencing the same thing, it was flooding our Orpheum and our public library. And so then finally, we had those, um, American Rescue Plan dollars and were able to fully replace that. But I, I, I can empathize with you that I would wanna make sure that it's addressed too and it's not just a Band-Aid.
Right.
So I would, I would tell you, I mean, the good news is, is I'm glad we got it patched and worked with you through this and we can look at what that area looks like and when, when it's fully going to be replaced or when it's on the plans for that. But then the bad news is, money, I mean, it's a very expensive endeavor and we have a lot of infrastructure to replace and so we'll just have to see where it lands.
Well, you know, one of the concerns too is, is that, you know, where this was repaired and everything there on Seager Avenue, probably what, fifteen yards or so from that, the street is breaking away again. And so there's cones around there and so, you know, as someone who lives in that area, you're thinking, oh my gosh, is this gonna happen again?
And it's a beautiful area and it's like, yeah.
It was wonderful, you know, that, I was glad that I was still awake at eleven oh six when water started coming into my house. You know, 'cause we started acting right away between myself, um, you know, my neighbors.
Neighbors and everything.
Yeah, exactly. And so, so we started, you know, just happening right away and so it just, um, like I said, it's just, when you see those cones and, and you're wondering, okay, is it gonna happen again?
Let's try to figure out, let's let Julian.
I'm sending the email right now.
And, and let's see what we can do.
Okay.
Nicole says she has all your information, so Mike, will you stay in touch with her, please?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll just try to address that area, but, yeah.
We appreciate it, thank you so much.
Maybe look at a priority listing that we have.
That's what I wonder.
For these types of projects. Anyone else be heard? Have one.
I've had it added to the agenda for our next meeting for discussion and we'll look at it.
Thank you. Matthew?
Um, well, first I wanna, I wanna thank Unity in the community, um, they, they moved down to the riverfront this year, it was really nice having it in that space. Um, I did notice that the, the police and the sheriffs didn't do the dunk tank, I think maybe it was a little bit too windy, a little scared of the coldness, but that's okay. Um, but it was a, it was well-attended and it was really nice seeing that space get as much use as it's gotten. Um, tonight is the mayor's youth commission young ambassadors ceremony at seven o'clock. Um, so I'm looking forward to a new batch of young ambassadors. Art splash this weekend, um, and then this is a little further out, but the next re-event, um, since Arrow was here for the whole meeting, um, the next, uh, re-event is the twenty-seventh from nine to twelve, so if you have any electronics or anything that need recycled. That is everything.
Julie?
I don't have anything today.
Alex?
Gosh, I keep feeling like a broken record, I mean, I worked with city staff, various city staff on numerous different projects throughout the week, but looking at sidewalk areas where there, we have a sidewalk area that's not completed or what have you, but city staff has been on top of at least addressing and looking into those, I know nothing to share necessarily here.
Dan?
I wanna tell Matthew a nice picture in the paper of you. Anyway, that's all, at the, at the union picnic.
Are you making fun of me?
No, it was a nice picture of you.
I only broke two camera lenses.
It's fun, that's all I had.
I was in, uh, are you done?
I'm, no, I'm done.
I was in Kenosha, not on business, but pleasure, and I read that the, I think it's a Kenosha city has a class action suit going against all the fire truck manufacturers 'cause they've got it down to three and fire trucks have gone up from when I got off the council the last time to now, five times. And so they're suing them and I wish we would join that class action suit because I do believe they're fixing prices here. You can't have, and if you think they're bad now, wait till you get a fifteen, twenty percent steel.
Tariff.
Certain, certain tariff on it. And they keep buying each other out, we're down to like two or three now. They have different names, but they're all owned by the same company. And they compare what they're charging for fire trucks, which ought to be against the law, but it's public record, so, anyway, I think we should join that lawsuit 'cause I, I've seen those trucks escalate so much in price and they're, they're not that much different that it, they should go up that much. Second of all, we did a nice job from what I understand on the Floyd Trail, but why do we not take the signs down, open them up? What, what's going on there? There are still barricades on each end everywhere.
I don't know if they're just waiting for that to cure, I don't see Gordon out there.
Well, you don't, the asphalt doesn't take that long to cure.